June 9, 2015, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
Good morning to all. Join me in prayer, would you please? Fathers, we humble before you, we ask that you forgive us five minutes. Lord, we ask that you look over us today as this board goes about conducting the business of... Lord, we thank you for the beautiful weather we've been getting, we thank you for the rain we've been getting. Lord, we ask that you be with us, as you bless this country. The Lord has always been with our military, as one has served and one's of proactive duty. As always, be with our law enforcement, like it's not a week goes by that we don't lose an officer in the line of duty. Lord, we ask this all in your precious name. Uh, just one minute, please.
Praise the allegiance to the good life of this United States of America, and to be a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and self-protection.
Good morning to all. Thank you for taking time to come out and be... Join us for the June 9 regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. This time, we're going to call the meeting to order. And we will start with the consent agenda and the information packet. Any of you have had an opportunity to look it over? Have any questions with the audience, please be recognized and we'll address it. If not, we'll move to our staff. Does any of the staff members have any question with the consent agenda or the information packet? Having none, at this time, we will turn to the board. Does any board member have any, excuse me, questions with the information packet or the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Sure. Okay, we'll go ahead and recognize here.
Um, and I don't have an issue, just a question regarding the information packet on page eight. It is an email that I had sent to the county administrator as a follow-up to an email that I'd sent three months ago regarding our new Parks Director and a report on the Parks in District 3. And it's appeared in the information packet, which I'm... My question is, is this the response to my email? And I do see that there is a list of expenditures for each one of our districts regarding our parks, which are, you know, basically the typical maintenance expenditures for the parks. And I had, as you could see in the email, I had asked for kind of a plan of action regarding the Parks in District 3 from our new Parks Director. And was curious as to, I'm not sure why this is in the information packet, I did not place it there. I spoke with Jennifer Jenkins, she had not placed it there. So, my question is, is this my response? I did not receive a response three months ago from our county administrator and have not received a response to this email that I sent on May 26.
Have you received a response from the TDC, from Mr. Trailer?
No.
No response completely?
No, I did not direct my email to Mr. Trailer through the county administrator ordinance. I directed it to our county administrator. The original email, I had also copied Ms. Jenkins. But when Mr. Trailer was originally hired, I had reached out to Mr. Butler, wanted to give Mr. Trailer an opportunity to get situated. But I have not received anything from TDC regarding the parks, other than, you know, the normal expenditures that we see. So, my question is, is this the response, or am I... Am I going to receive a more thorough response?
Mr. Butler, we'll recognize you.
Mr. Chairman, I did not put this in. I had, I put my initials on the bottom. So, this was not in... I didn't put it in, number one. Commissioner did get a response from Jennifer Jenkins. She was copied on the original email. I immediately within minutes sent her an email and asked her to... To get information to the commissioner. Subsequent to that, she had a conversation with the commissioner, told him where they were. And that, at the point in time, the Parks Director was working on a list of deficiencies in all of the parks in the county. So, I know the... It's already been responded to. Why it should have been here, I'm not sure who put it in. Maybe Madam Clerk can tell us who did it.
Ms. Norris, can you shed any light on this?
Um, let me check really in how we came about getting it.
And I'll just interject while you all have your discussion. I did receive a preliminary response from Jennifer, that they were going to be looking at it. That was originally when Mr. Trailer was hired. And I do know it takes a little bit of time to make an assessment. And we do know that Ms. Jenkins has been out with a personal issue. But as far as a responsive answer, that I have not received.
It came as a part of Ms. Jenkins' April report package that she submitted for the information packet. So, it was a part of her report that she attached.
And I don't have an issue that this is in the information packet. I mean, this is public record, and this is clearly an issue for District 3. Again, District... We're out there in District 3, and we're trying to get the work done. And it's difficult to get the work done. But I did speak with Ms. Jenkins, and she said she had not submitted this. She did not know it was in the information packet. And again, I don't have a problem with it being in the information packet. My question is, is this... Is this an attempt at responding? And, you know, I would like a response from our Parks Director regarding a plan for the parks. And part of this is because we do have our NERDA projects coming up for two of the Parks in District 3. And I don't want us making changes to the park that are going to be changed again under the NERDA, or upgrades, or replacing things that are going to be replaced with the NERDA funds. And we need to have that communication so that we can work efficiently. I'm not sure why the county administrator hasn't responded to me on these items. And it was three months ago that I sent the original request, and then, again, on May 26, that I had sent the follow-up with no response. I did receive some responses to specific questions that were made, but I have not received the report on the parks.
All right, let me interject here. Would you like to just pull this out of the information packet till we can get to who submitted it? Where, when, what, why?
It does not need to be pulled. It's public record.
Okay.
I just had the question.
Okay, all right.
So, can I expect a response? I would like for our county administrator to follow up with our Parks Director.
He's already received a response. You got a response.
I would like to... I'm sorry, Mr. County Administrator.
You received a response.
I would like for you to follow up... Follow up. All right.
Okay.
Now, I'm probably not clear with what I'm requesting. Mr. County Administrator, I would like to respectfully request that you follow up with our Parks Director and ask him to submit to me his plan for the parks in District 3 of what the needs are and the priorities. We have limited... A limited budget, we all know that. We have $5,000 to maintain our parks. I'm not certain, but I think I may have the most parks in our county. I have probably at least six parks and all of the beach, in Sancho Beach. And $5,000 is very difficult to maintain those parks on that budget. So, I would very much like to see the report from our Parks Director prioritizing the needs of those parks so that the people can enjoy our parks. I know we have huge issues at White City Boat Ramp, and I have been asking for updates on that. It's a mess. The communication is a serious issue here with our administration. So, I would like to request that you follow up with that.
Commissioner Bryan. The money comes from the TDC, the Tours Development Council, the Board of County Commissioners. We do not budget taxpayers' money, you know, $5,000 fees. And if that's TDC, maybe you need to speak with the TDC, with Mrs. Jenkins, and she can shed some light on this. I know they helped me up with the park. One of the parks, I have two in my district, the district that I represent, and I don't know how many Ms. Mclemore has. Be there, we could go there, but I don't think we're getting anywhere here today.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that is a very good advice, and would like to work with the TDC. However, I'm trying to respect the county administrator ordinance and our new Parks Director, and look at that list of priorities so we can work from there. I think that we all need to work as a team.
All right, thank you. Now, Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we need to pull from the consent agenda pages 124, 125, and 126.
124, 125, and 126. It was shipped, if I remember reading that. Yeah. All right, sir. Commissioner, what would you...
We need to get Mr. Attorney to add the language on page 125. Six bullet down. When it's talked about sworn affidavit, we skipped down to that third line right there. It said eligible, loan period, and agree also that no rental. We need to add "no sale" or rental of the property to a third party.
Sworn affidavit, okay. You want to add the word, the wording...
No sale.
No sale.
Yes, or no rental.
Or rental. Is that the only change that you had?
Yes.
If that is, we can... You don't have any problem adding that into the... With that change, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes. Got a motion to accept the consent agenda and packet with changes. Page 125 to implement the word "no sale" or rental. I hear a second.
Second.
Yep.
A second.
Is it? All right, any further discussion? Any board members, anyone in the audience? Uh, proposition? Ma'am? Okay, sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cora Curtis.
End of mic. You state your name for the record.
Cora Curtis, 1004 Clifford Sims Drive. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Cora. How are you today?
Good morning. I did review that. I just have a question as regards to family being able to occupy the residence.
All right, let me go over here to the gentleman. Mr. Darney?
Yes, good morning. In working with Joe Paul and speaking to Mr. Chaney, and then, obviously, we discussed with Commissioner Quinn on that change about the no sale. The proposed policy and language is to assure the county that the family will remain in residence throughout the remainder of that ship period. So, the heirs to the estate, or Ms. McNair's estate, would pass, and obviously, it passes to you in this particular circumstance. But it's your family that then would stay in residence under the affidavit, and it couldn't be rented, and it couldn't be sold.
Okay.
And that would just... That would not only be for you, but it would be for everybody under the ship policy going forward in Gulf County.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. All right, any opposition? Motion passed 5-0 on the consent agenda. At this time, we will move into county staff business. We will start over with county administrator, Mr. Butler. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is yesterday at 11:20, I didn't read it yet, late yesterday afternoon, received an email from DEP. Got a copy here for the board members.
DEP?
DEP. To do with the NERDA projects. We have Highland View Boat Ramp and the Beacon Hill Park NERDA project. I'm going to give you a copy of this, and we'll talk about it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is an email from Jim McCausus with DEP. He's handling the NERDA projects for Gulf County. He's a project manager for the Highland View Boat Ramp in the Beacon Hill Park. In reading this, first time I'd heard, I'm going to give it to the board. And we have recommendations for the board, what to do with this. He's saying, "We're presently negotiating design fees for two subject projects and want to know if this project will be subject to Gulf County Development Review Process. The Highland View project will include improvements to the existing access dock and possibly a new dock on the opposite side of the ramp. No work is planned to the ramp itself."
Let's hold up right there. I thought that was one of the main things, was try to move that ramp out of that swift current.
It was the only reason for us to make an application for this project.
Okay, all right.
And I'd like to interject on that issue. My understanding, and I do have a suggestion regarding this request, but my understanding is that the budget that was designed for this project is underfunded. And they are trying to do the best that they can to secure the boats with the, you know, the launching of the boats with the budget that we have. One of the things that I had suggested we look at is the Indian Pass Boat Ramp, which you allowed the NERDA funds, and the NERDA folks agreed to allow those funds to come to the other projects. And it was... Those were applied to the pier, because they believe that the pier is also under... grossly underfunded with the request. Now, the pier is a later tier project, so we do have some time before they begin on the pier. The Highland View Boat Ramp is in process now. I suggested that we look at applying the funds from the Indian Pass Boat Ramp to the Highland View Boat Ramp, so that we can make whatever changes are possible with those funds. So, the issue is a lack of funding. And I, you know, I think if this board made the request to the DEP, and they are handling... The DEP is handling these projects. I think if this board made the request that those funds be applied to the Highland View Boat Ramp, that we may have a possibility of altering the ramp itself. They've had the engineers out there, and it really is just a function of funding. Then we can work at potentially bringing in some more funds for the pier.
Okay, let me, Mr. Butler, let me go back over here, finish.
The rest of the email. "The existing restroom will be refurbished, such as replacing fixtures, damaged emission louvers, doors, etc. The existing parking area is stable, so we simply... We are simply contemplating wheelstop to better define parking spaces." So, that's part to do with Highland View. And there's $150,000.
$176,000.
$176,000.
$176,000.
And they're probably talking about minimal amount, probably $25,000 worth of work here.
That's... Don, I don't see that much. When we were working on all these different ones about several years ago, the main thing with Highland View Boat Ramp is the complaint that we got was people... When they back their boat down, they get there into current immediately. So, this whole Highland View deal, and I think it was to move that ramp back. If we have to spend $176,000, I'd much rather fix the problem, and then let's take some other funds and do some upgrade on the restroom facilities. But the main deal that people were complaining about was the boat ramp put you right out into the channel. And this $176,000 was requested to move that ramp. And that's the only thing they're not going to do. So, I would say, we... Number one, I knew, and everybody else knew, that when DEP were going to administer these, they weren't going to, you know, we weren't going to have a good understanding of what we wanted from the get-go. If they would have just given the money to District 3, then $176, she could have designed... She could have worked with staff and got that designed what needed to be. So, I would say, we need to at least send a response that we would love to sit down and talk to you. The whole purpose of this... These monies was to fix the ramp. That was my understanding.
And I think this board needs to put in writing to DEP that that is the main concern of fixing the ramp. And I had also indicated to them that our maintenance department is excellent, and there's a lot that we can do with bathrooms and parking, but the ramp itself is the issue. So, I think if this board sends something in writing to the DEP, that that is the issue, the launching of those boats into the... Without launching directly into the channel is the main issue, that that would go a long way.
Okay.
One other question I have for Don. Don, Pierce Barrett used to be... Is he still over all these projects? And this is just the project manager for this one? Or is Pierce still involved?
That's all I know he is. I'm not sure.
He is still involved. Yes, he is. This is someone that's assisting him.
Haven't met him.
As a project manager.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
And he's also an engineer.
I think there may be some communications gap, loss. It's the first time we've heard that DEP is not considering moving the ramp inland. Everything we have talked to them about before was move it inland. The... That ramp is a pre-stress ramp. It came out of Marion County, it was bought and tethered boat ramp systems, brought in on a flatbed, picked up by the crane, and set in place. It is not a port-in-place ramp. That ramp can be picked up and set out of the way, excavate, put that ramp back down. It's a pre-stress ramp. So, that's where a lot of your money is, is in the ramp and pouring and dealing with it. But this is a... This is a pre-stress ramp. And I'd say there probably is enough money in that project to do what we need done, to move it. And any amount to get back into that boat out of canal would be safer. Four, five, six, eight, 10, 12, 15, 20 foot would make it a lot safer than what it is now.
Any shot, then we're going to move right along on this.
And then, I have a conversation on the Beacon Hill Park. But Beacon Hill improvements will include a small amphitheater, new dedicated parking area, and corresponding stormwater management facility, refurbishment of both restrooms, new pavilions, selected landscaping, and possible repairs to the ball field dugouts and backstocking, dog park. Of course, we can save some funding if projects are not subject to Development Review Process. So, my recommendation on both of these projects would be to wind up with a project that is back in front of the county commission, for the county commission to agree to that this is what we wanted to look at. We didn't know the engineer was already working on a design that was not going to move the Highland View Boat Ramp. And it's dangerous, they're already spending money on it, apparently.
Right, we need to make a phone call instead of a letter, really.
Probably a phone call, and then follow up with a written letter. That's my recommendation, and I think the board already said do it, well.
We need to do that. What they've designed here for Highland View, $2,500 would be, I mean, fixing the parking lot and a couple of lavatories and a door on a restroom. The main issue is the boat ramp. So, it's all right with the board here. I'll just have the administrator to contact DEP, Mr. Jim, whatever his name is, I don't know this gentleman, and tell him that we're off on the wrong foot. Need to back up, regroup, and readdress this.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I know that they would like to have a county staff person that they can consult with on some of the issues with the projects. And I would like to ask this board to allow Mark Cawthron to work with them. I think that he has the knowledge about the parks and about the maintenance that we can provide. Some of these items can... The budgets are all slim to some extent, and there are some things that, as the county, that we can provide. And I think that Mr. Cawthron would provide good knowledge and advice in that regard. And they had requested, since Ms. Kapinski has moved into TDC, someone, and they're beyond kind of the grant phase, and they're more into the work phase, and I think that he has that knowledge base that would be an asset to them. So, I would like to ask the board to allow... I guess if we need a motion, I'll make the motion that the board allows Mr. Cawthron to work with the DEP on these projects in the District 3 parks.
Mr. Administrator, you know, Mr. Cawthron worked for you. You have any issue with that?
Mark and I will sit down and have a conversation.
There you go. Just one comment. One comment on this, and no disrespect to Mark, we've all got fine staff. There's nobody out there any better, probably, than our Parks Director on boat ramps. He has built them, he has made them. I'm okay with Mark, no problem. I just want to throw that out there. He has the experience.
And I know you don't, but I mean, and you can use the rest of staff.
It won't take a lot of time, but Mr. Cawthron can clearly talk with our Parks Director or anyone else. But I think that he has the broad-based knowledge for... There's a lot of issues that are going on in these parks, and he has that broad-based knowledge of all the different issues and can go to the various people that he can lean on. So, I think he would be a good connection for them.
Mr. Butler.
So, I'll put that as a motion.
Yeah, I'm good with proceeding that way.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan. I hear a second, if Mr. Cawthron worked, administrator, I hear a second to that. I hear a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any further board discussion on... Want any audience on this? If no opposition, motion passed 5-0. Better Mr. Cawthron to work with NERDA or DEP on this project. Okay, now.
Chairman, next item, just bring to the board's attention. We did get the application in to the Department of Treasury for the MYIP, the multi-year implementation plan, including the application was funding for Restore Coordinator. We've already... We've had to add out a couple weeks for Restore Coordinator. Probably a couple more weeks have to add out. Hopefully, we'll find somebody that can handle this project. But just wanted to bring to the board's attention, this in the information packet today on page one is for the job notice. And the application did go in on 29th for courtesy review by Treasury, and then we have a schedule on it. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Attorney? Mr. Hammond?
Couple things. For Denise, the insurance committee recommendations is to stay with Pidgeot, our current carrier of auto property, liability, and workers' comp for the next year, to not be in the state with Pidgeot.
That's with preferred now, isn't it?
Same, same.
I'll have to abstain from that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting on that board.
Need a motion to...
All right. A motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Mclemore? Second. Second.
A second in motion.
Second. By Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? Board discussion, anyone in the audience? Any opposition?
I vote no.
All right. Motion passes three with one no and one standing. Get proper documents for him to sign on this, please. All right?
That's all on the insurance for Denise, just for the board's information. Tentatively, we're scheduled to sign the bond documents on Tuesday, the 23rd. After the board meeting, the chairman will sign, and closing on Wednesday, the 24th. Next thing, just following up from the last meeting, the board directed staff to come back with countywide mandatory garbage for the unincorporated areas of Gulf County. So, I just want to give you a brief synopsis of your options to move forward on mandatory garbage, and just want to clear up some fallacies, and then if you've got any questions, that's fine, too. The two major...
Mr. Hammond, I can hardly hear you. Can you speak in the microphone? Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm getting old. Thanks.
First of all, for hard, what we call hard mandatory, which would be on the garbage bill. The negative sides to hard mandatory are these. Approximately $50,000 of steady cost to determine who will pay, what they will pay, what vacant lots, commercial and residential rates would be. A first-class letter has to be mailed to every affected property owner. Potential cost about $12,000 for that. Cannot be implemented until the 2017 budget year, which means that it would actually go on the property bill in... That would begin being paid in November of 2016, so...
2017.
Well, it would begin... It would begin being paid in November, but it's the 2016. That's correct. You would have to pass a resolution, notify the constitutional officers that would be affected by that by January the 1st of 2016. You would have to budget in the current budget year about $65,000 in order to get the preliminaries done in order to do that. So, that's the hard mandatory. Soft mandatory can be implemented virtually immediately, can be done by ordinance. The negative of that is enforcement, but... The, the negative of that is, is enforcement, but, but I think we've got some misconceptions. Again, some of them were, were misconceptions that, that the former provider gave us based on the number of users when we bid that they were claiming. And, and, and to give an example, they claimed Berry Dunes was one customer. A hundred and ninety-seven users in Berry Dunes, a hundred and ninety-seven structures, townhouses or houses in Berry Dunes, but Waste Management counted that as one. The neighboring development, Sea Cliffs, there's like sixty units, they counted them as one. So the, the fallacy was that we had a participation rate that was at like fifty-five percent. Our participation rate is much higher than that, approaching eighty percent. So the fact that the, the vast majority of people, or a great number of people, don't have garbage service today is, is incorrect. And I think Waste Pro's give us some numbers, we're like eight hundred and some odd households higher than the number we had when we bid, that they are currently serving today. So the, the impact will not be as great. The savings, savings when we did the contract was pretty big, what we were paying and what we are paying today. I just wrote the check, it was fifty-one seventy-five for a quarter. Savings to go to hard mandatory, single payer, will only save three dollars a month, and that's based on the, the current bid that we have, our long-term contract, and it was, was basically even between either of the ones that bid. So there's, so it's not a lot of savings, we're talking about thirty-six dollars a year. And that doesn't include the final outcome based on the study because it would be spread. Right now, commercials pay a lot more than residential, substantially more. When you put that on the tax bill, that, that may not necessarily be the case. And then it, you know, the study would tell you vacant lots, vacant lots that may or may not have an RV, or may, you know, may, may not generate garbage, households that, that, houses that are empty, you know, they would still be taxed and, and garbage paid on that whether they're empty or they're occupied, so those type of things. It will not solve the problems of couches and yard debris. Yard debris in both projections, both of the bids that we had was about five dollars a month. We put it on initially, it lasted about a month, and then we took it back off. So the, to add the yard debris back would still, even with the three dollar savings, would be a two dollar a month increase over what they're paying today, even with hard mandatory. So that's basically your options. I don't think you're gonna get what you want as far as the, the problems with the, the furniture and the couches and the, and the yard debris, which seems to be a problem, especially in the, in the south end of the county. I go into, to mandatory garbage, hard or soft, but those are your options.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a real brief request.
Sure.
Mr. Hammond, I would like to have your report that you just gave, it would have been really helpful for the board to have that before we came into this meeting to look at. So I'm gonna request that you place a copy of your report into my box in the administration office, please, a hard copy, thank you.
I don't have a hard copy of a report, I just have notes, and unfortunately, I have quite a few hats.
Just write up those figures that you gave, that, you can just even make a copy of your notes, it doesn't have to be fancy. I just would like to see, you know, unfortunately, I can't write as fast as you talk. And again, this is a, this is a big issue for this county. That's something that should have been in our packet so the public can see it and see what we're considering, and also for this board to consider. But if you'll just make a copy of your notes even, I'm fine with that. It, it doesn't have to be fancy, and just place it in my box. Thank you.
I'm, I'm surprised by the eighty percent number.
No, I'm not. I worked for six weeks with Waste Pro, every day for six weeks, and the list, Waste Management did a terrible, terrible job in the transition. And people were running the trucks down saying, what about my can? Well, you're not on the list. They, they did a, they didn't do the county right, Waste Management didn't. But there's a lot more out there, probably eighty percent, as you stated, are more, are on garbage service in this county right now.
I, I wanna hear more about it. I'm still not convinced that we don't need to do it. I've, I've heard a lot from Cape residents and others that says there's some still out there that's not, don't have the service, but they use somebody else's can, and that's just not fair either, so.
Why they use a commercial can?
I, I wanna make sure now, because staff don't recommend you do anything. I just, I just laid out the two options. I understand. You just, you, you gave the report, and I, I just gotta, I gotta take that in and talk some more.
And we, we need to do something about the yard debris pickup. It's not working, and we've got a big mess. We've got huge piles of yard debris. In Beacon Hill Park, they have gone into the little nature trails and dumped tremendous amounts of yard debris, and it's going to attract rodents and vermin, and it is a problem. And this board has got to address it.
I think the only way to address it is, is, is do what we've done before, and that's back up on what we've done. You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna add cost.
Yeah.
But we still have the equipment, but there's no way to fix it unless people take it upon themselves not to put it on the roadways. And once you do, if we go backwards, and here's my fear, and, and I see it especially on our, on our south end, it's ugly. People put mounds and mounds of stuff on the roadside for, for us to pick up, and it takes a month to make the round of the county. So that may be stood out there three or four weeks, and it's just, it, it, it gives the appearance in tourist corridor of, of not looking good and those type of things. So it's a, there's a hindrance by, by going back to it in, in expense and the way it looks, and there's a hindrance not going to it and people dumping stuff elsewhere. So I don't know what to fix.
Well, and the problem now is if we go back to picking up, of course, I, unless there's some kind of an understanding that I'm not aware of, we have to pay the tipping fees because we don't have a landfill any longer. So I, I believe if we go back to picking up yard debris, we have to take care of the tipping fees at the transfer station. I, I think that we either need to look at, and, and clearly, I mean, I don't know, you guys are, your, I mean, your brains just work so much faster than mine, because I can't process all these figures coming at me with somebody just sitting there rambling off figures, and I, I need to see something in writing to review. But it sounds like Mr. Hammond is saying that it, it would actually cost more to go to mandatory garbage pickup, which is, you know, it's counter to what you would think because usually if you put more customers on, you, you have the economies of scale and you have a better price, and you could get the yard debris pickup with the provider. So, but I, this board's got to come up with a solution because we have, we have a mess, and the public wants someone to pick up their yard debris. Now, maybe that means we look at, there are some private providers out there that do yard debris that the county wouldn't have to do. I don't know if it's financially a, a good idea, but it might be something we need to look at. There are some private providers that have their own place where they take that yard debris, where they can put it out, they're licensed to do it, but we've got to find a solution, the, the, the people need someone to pick up their yard debris. It's not working.
The solution was, we should have stayed with a five dollar fee. The only problem with that solution was you have some people in the community that don't have any yard debris.
That's right.
And so you had a lot of complaints that I don't wanna pay that five dollars because I don't use it. That was a perfect solution, is, is a five dollar fee was cheap. The only other chance you got now to do it with Waste Pro is they'll give you an extra can for eight bucks, and you can put your yard debris in an extra can for eight bucks a month. So instead of five bucks a month, it's gonna cost you eight bucks a month, but I, I don't know the answer.
And the extra five dollars also went on certain townhomes that, that didn't even have a yard. They, there, it was an impossibility for them to generate yard debris, but they got the extra five dollars. So maybe we need to have a workshop on this, and, but this, this is a big issue because there, there are certain things that the county has to provide, that people have to get from their government. We, as a county, I think we wade into a lot of areas that the government really doesn't need to be wading into. But the issues that people have to get from their government, we need to make those right, and we need to offer those services to our citizenry in the best way possible at the most efficient price.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me repeat, 'cause I, I didn't say that, that it was gonna cost more. The, the board at the last meeting voted four to one for the staff to come back with a recommendation on how to go to mandatory garbage, and that's what I'm doing. So I wanna just repeat. It was also stated that the problem could be solved by this roadside pickup. It would not be solved, the problems that y'all talked about at the last meeting, the, the massive amounts of stuff will not be solved under any plan, mandatory or not. The other thing, it was said that, that if we go mandatory, they could pick up the roadside debris and save money. It will not. It will actually be an increase to pick up the roadside debris. It will be a five dollar increase. The savings for mandatory on the tax bill garbage is three dollars per month. A you, a single payer for either of our provider, our former provider or the one that we have currently, will save you thirty-six dollars a year to have a single payer. The county be the collector of the taxes and, and write one check. So if you keep the exact same system and make it mandatory, the exact same system we have today with no roadside debris and put it on the tax bill, in the 2017 year, you will save, the average person will save three dollars per month, or thirty-six dollars a year, okay? And they still won't have the roadside debris and, or, or any of these other problems that come with people throwing garbage in the parks or throwing debris on the sides of the road and furniture and things of that nature. So it will save money. The negative is, the Board of County Commissioners, in order to implement this hard mandatory, has to come up with sixty-five thousand dollars before January one of next year in order to get ready to put it on the tax bill, because that's what the legislature says you have to do. So those are your options. You can vote by ordinance, starting today, to start the process and do a soft mandatory, which requires everybody to get on. There's no savings, our provider will not provide a savings, but then when somebody does not have garbage, code enforcement can ticket them. Now that's, those are the options that we have.
The whole bottom line is, people are responsible. Human beings are terrible, terrible. I know good and well, all down Indian Pass come through, people from White City didn't haul those palm limbs down in the Cape area and put them out, people right down there did. They're responsible for their stuff. Take responsibility, and we wouldn't have it. The only other option, Commissioner, we're gonna get off of this, we can go to voters, the property owners, throw about a meal on them, collect a thirteen fi, one point three million dollars a year, and we, we can do it that way, but I don't think you're gonna get the people who pay property taxes and wanna vote a meal on their, an additional meal just to go by and pick up somebody's limb debris because they're too lazy or too sorry, or don't care for throwing their limbs out on the road. You wanna pick them up, you wanna pick them up. You see it doing, get code enforcement, three or four go before the judge over here, and that, that'll be a big deterrent.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on this subject, can we get an update on where we are with the Waste Pro contract? I know the requirement was to construct a transfer station, it was supposed to be built by January first. The last I heard, that we, we didn't have any ground broken as of yet, here we are in June, but maybe, maybe I'm mistaken, and I, I would love to have an, an update on that situation.
Let me, let me brief you, I was there yesterday on site. Contractors are out there, they've cleared, I don't know how many acres of property, and they're doing a lot of prep work, working right now on a, a holding pond, but there are, there's work going on out there. If you want to, just drive right out there and look when the meeting's over. It's taking place today.
Yeah, well, rather than go look at it, I, I'd rather have an actual report of where we are with the permit, with the stat, you know, a status update report, which is what also the, I don't want everyone in the public to feel like they have to drive out there and look what's going on, it's probably not good at a construction site.
Okay.
But I know that the public is interested in this. I mean, the, we've entered into a contract, but the public is really the party to that contract, we represent them. And this, this is a contract that has had multiple issues, I mean, just tremendous issues. I wasn't a party to this contract. I, I was not able to attend the special meeting that was called to approve this contract, and of course, I don't, I don't attend the, the meeting in Dow Keith where it was actually negotiated over whiskey, but this is what we end up with.
Wait a minute. Whoa, 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 whoa.
We've got a nice waste management contract that was negotiated over whiskey at a Dow Keith men's night.
Commissioner, that is out of order there.
That is the truth.
No, no, that's just your opinion, and that's totally out. Now let me go right over here to the attorney. You wanna address this? Would you? Or either one, which one of you wanna address it? Which one of you?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to give you all a report on the status on the 23rd meeting. I'll review the file.
They're paying a penalty.
I'd be happy to do that for you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Mr. Hammond, I think you still had the floor.
Just to respond to the latest, we took the low bid, we bid between two of the biggest companies there are. We took the low bid, and I don't, I wasn't a party to any negotiation at Dow Keith, but I, obviously somebody reported you as the case.
I don't hear Dow Keith anymore.
But we took the low bid, it was bid by the two biggest companies, and we got the best deal for the counting, and saved the citizens significantly off the, off the garbage bill.
My bills, Lord.
Garbage, garbage bill went down eleven dollars, mine did.
I don't know that we say, we've got some very unhappy people.
Miss Sumner, you have anything?
Yes, sir, I have one thing.
Sure.
Carrie, can you use the mic, please? Thank you.
Mr. Jaeger is going to be the only one attending the NACO conference in July, and I need permission or authority for him to have, to be able to vote on behalf of the county. He's the only one attending.
If that's all right with the board.
Maybe we should explain to the public what this NACO trip is, I mean, where are you going, what you're voting on?
Well, NACO has a...
Give a brief commissioner over there, would you?
NACO has a conference once a year at different places, different locations. This particular conference, and I've talked with Don about it, I didn't really wanna go because I'm gonna have to be leaving from Orlando to go up there, but there's a voting that goes on for leadership. There's a, also a Gulf Coast Caucus that meets for the oil spill and other, other things that, that affects federal legislation that affects the coastal counties and that type of thing. So I told Don that I would go, and that's what it's all about. So the voting, you just have to have a motion of the board to allow whoever, whichever commissioner goes, that authority to vote for the, for the county, that leadership position. And that's what it is.
I need a motion. Grant, Commissioner Jaeger, to vote for Guff County.
I'll make that motion, I think.
All right, thank you, sir. When he makes a motion, I have a second. Second by Commissioner Mclemore.
And I just have one comment.
Further discussion?
I'm pleased that Commissioner Jaeger is willing to attend the NACO conference. I do think we need to be represented at these conferences. I don't think we need to be represented en masse. So I'm glad to see that Commissioner Jaeger, who is an extremely competent representative for this county, is going to represent us.
All right. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience on this? Any opposition?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
What does the acronym NACO stand for?
It's the National Association of Counties Organization, National Association of Counties.
All right. Anyone else? Was any opposition? Mr. Jaeger is representing Guff County at NACO, motion passed five and oh. Miss Sumner?
That's all, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lowry?
I don't have anything.
All right, let's go here. Mr. Danford? Paul?
Yes, sir.
Whitfield?
Just got a national update for you, you have this in front of you. We had a good collection month last month of May, a hundred and eight thousand seven eighty-one. That brings a total collected from our billing up forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars from this time last year.
So you're forty-eight thousand above?
Right. And we also...
This is through what month?
Through May.
May, okay.
From November to May. We also up fifty-eight runs from this time last year.
You've got four more months in this fiscal year.
Right.
You're eight hundred, am I looking at this right, eight hundred and sixty thousand?
Six hundred, well, total, total collected with our agreements from Mexico Beach and Sacred Heart, the tax area is seven hundred and twenty thousand two fifty-three. The, the six nineteen is just reflecting what we bill out.
Okay. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Sheriff, you have anything? Any comment from anyone? Sheriff, you, just come right over here.
Yes, sir.
Adam Clark?
Yes, sir.
Roberts? Ex-Career County Staff are going to board business. Commissioner Quinn, we'll start with you, sir.[1783.36] Ex-Carey County staff are going to board business. Commissioner Quinn, we'll start with you, sir.
Yes, sir. Just a quick update on, we met with the Pacers Foundation about the affordable housing, um, um, last week. And, um, Mr. Rick Hayman, myself, Ms. Christie, Mr. Bo Patterson and Mr. Attorney. And, uh, it was, it was interesting. It was interesting. And, uh, he will be back in about a month to meet with us once again. And then following day, he's going to meet with the, uh, with the public. So, uh, his attorney's gonna, gonna set all that up. Uh, and we want to encourage the public to come out and, uh, ask questions because we had a lot of questions that was asked and, uh, we're still kind of puzzled, uh, to what's, what's really going on. So hopefully we'll get a, uh, update here in three or four weeks when he comes back. And then he's gonna be, uh, he's gonna meet with the public. Thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner McLemore, you good? Commissioner Bryan?
I have a couple of things here. Let me see. Um, yes, one of the, um, one of the issues I have is at the last county commission meeting, we discussed to some extent the, the email accounts. And, um, as of Friday afternoon, I have been shut out of my email account. So if anyone is emailing me, I, I cannot read them. I cannot see them. I cannot send. I have no access to emails. And, um, apparently I have been directed to speak with Mr. Hammond about this. So I would like to ask Mr. Hammond, um, what's going on with my email account?
You brought up in the last meeting that it wasn't on the agenda that, uh, we had a policy. The policy was put in place because you had stopped Ms. Lanier from getting a copy of all of your email like she does for all the commissioners and like she has since we had email at the county. The board voted four to one at the last meeting that Ms. Lanier was supposed to get a copy of all in-going and outgoing mail from the county, like it always has been. You changed your password where Dennis could not do that. And it was reset and you had some, all of your email uploaded to the cloud and you notified Mr. Barfield. You were changing your password again where she couldn't get your email. So on Thursday afternoon, when he told me this, right before 5 o'clock, I directed him to change your password and that he would have to enter it in, in your, uh, devices personally since you can't be trusted with your password, which is a sad thing. It's in violation of board policy. He did not do that until Sunday evening is what he told me this morning, even though I directed him. It was, it was near the end of his work time. So if you've got a problem with that, it's the board's problem because it's the board's policy and staff has to implement board policy.
So you are the one that directed him to actually reset the password so that I would not have access and to, that he cannot give me the password to my own email?
That is correct.
Now, um, the emails, we're on a new email system. Thank God. We've moved into the current times and our emails are being kept on the cloud. So any one of you in the audience at the, at home viewing later, today here in this room, on this staff or on this board can get copies of any of our emails. Anybody who wants it, it's public record and you can go and retrieve that. But for some reason, my, my, that, that is the case and I, I, I confirm that with our IT manager because you don't in fact have the, um, passwords to all of the staff's email accounts, do you?
I don't have the passwords to anybody's account.
Okay, well, what about our IT department? Does, does he have the passwords to everyone's account?
Not that I'm aware of.
Or does Ms. Lanier have the passwords to everyone's account?
I'm not aware that he has the passwords to every account.
Well, I would like to, for, I would like for someone to go and, and ask Mr. Barfield to come in and answer that question.
Answer's no.
All right. So he doesn't have the password to everyone's account. Only mine.
That, that is correct.
So why is it that my password is something that is public and no one else's is? And I don't mean public. If it was public, I'd be happy to put the password out on the, on the internet if we all, all of us put our passwords out on the internet and any of you could go on. Now, clearly we don't want people sending emails from our accounts and that's exactly the problem that I have had for two and a half years since I've been on this board. I haven't had any control over my email account. I said this at the last meeting. Emails have been sent from my account without my knowledge. Emails have been deleted from my account before I see them. I have, I have had, until we migrated to this new system, access for a while only, only to 30 days worth of email and then it was broken down to two weeks. I could only see my past two weeks' worth of email. It is very difficult to function in this position that way. So my question is, why is it that my password belongs to the administration? And why is it more important? And I think maybe the members of this board should answer these questions. Why is it that it is more important for the administration to have access to my emails than for an elected official to have access to the emails? When the constituency is emailing Commissioner Three, they think that they're emailing me. Now, those emails all go to the cloud. They are all kept for public record and I made sure of that. That's why I haven't made an issue for two and a half years, because we've been keeping the emails on people's hard drives, which as we all know is not a safe way to keep emails. The hard drive fails, the emails are gone. And that's really not compliant with the public records law. So we finally moved to a new system where they're kept in the cloud. Nobody should have anyone's password. It's not necessary.
It, it's board policy and I don't care what board policy is, but Ms. Lanier's not here to defend herself and I, and I'm, but I am going to defend her because you have accused her of all these conspiracies of deleting your email and that is a bald-faced lie. Ms. Lanier is a long-term dedicated employee. She is not deleting your email. She is the repository for all five of your emails and Don's. And she's been keeping them the best that she could to follow the law. And you were the only one who has changed their password where you can circumvent the board's vote. It's not our vote, it's the board's vote. The board said Lynn's going to get a copy, not respond to your emails, not delete your emails. She's going to get a copy of every email that's sent by every commissioner and every email that's sent to the commissioner. And that's what, if you want to change board policy, change it. But until then, the staff's going to implement board policy.
Let me, let me make a comment. All right, right here. Over the years, I've just assumed, I didn't even know I had a password. My, my, my emails are forwarded to me and they're, and they're also forwarded to Lynn. I, I, I didn't know I, this is news to me, that I even have a password. But I don't care. What I want to make sure is that every email is protected. That every email that the public wants to see, they're able to see. I do not want a, uh, Hillary Clinton issue with these emails. I don't want to have, I want to make sure that when, when these come to, to, to my email, that when I delete them, they're still safe. And that's the way I understand the system is working and has worked. So I didn't, I don't know anything about a password. I don't care about that. My, my emails go exactly how they've gone for, for, for the number of years that we've had emails and that's through the staff and, and I don't have an issue with that.
And Commissioner Jaeger, isn't it true that you, I mean, I see it on the group emails that we get. You use your Purple Rish email, so the Commissioner Five emails are in fact forwarded to your Purple Rish email. Is that correct?
That's correct. That, that's why I want to make sure that when I delete, uh, a Commissioner Five email, it stays somewhere. I don't want to keep Commissioner Five emails on this thing. They just forwarded to this. But that's, that's the reason I go through staff so they can have access to all my emails for the public.
So how, well, first of all, again, I will say that all the emails are kept in the cloud. So there is access without it going through anyone else's computer. But in fact, how are your Purple Rish emails kept? When, when you respond to someone from a Purple Rish email account and they respond back, do you forward that back to the county if it's regarding county business?
No, absolutely not. All of my emails come through Commissioner Five. When I respond to Commissioner Five, it comes back through the cloud. So when- All of my responses come, come, even though they're forwarded to Purple Rishes, I, I send them back through Commissioner Five.
So when you receive an email into your Purple Rish account, you log into the Commissioner Five account to respond? Or you just copy Commissioner Five?
That's right.
Okay, so you copy Commissioner Five on every email that comes into your Purple Rish account that has to do with the county?
Well, yes and no. If it comes through Commissioner Five and they just happen to send it to, to my Purple Rish account, I, I just respond to the Commissioner Five.
And what if it doesn't require a response? Do you forward it back to the county because they happen to send you a county-related email to your Purple Rish account?
Any, any email I get, I forward back to Commissioner Five on county business.
So that's why you don't have a password because you're using your Purple Rish account and the things are just passing through to your Purple Rish account? You don't have to log in? You don't have to log in because they're, they're being forwarded? Well, yeah, it is the case. Because if you go online to check your email, you have to use a password.
All of my emails, let me make this clear. All of my emails go through Commissioner Five. They're maintained by Commissioner Five. And it's the easiest, the best way to, to respond to public records requests and those type of things. So I'm, I'm done discussing about that.
Get you. Uh, just hold up, you still. Mr. Butler?
Yeah, four years.
I don't think this, I don't see anything to the people out there. I've got the same one I've had for five years and I hadn't changed. And anybody can look at mine. I don't have any secrets. My hand's up here. Go ahead.
I started off with four years. I backed up before then. Most of what Commissioner's saying about this is untrue. Most of what she is saying is not correct. For years, we have mirrored, um, Number Five's email to his personal account or his, his business account. His email comes in, if you send something to, to, um, Commissioner Five, it goes to county computer and you can't lose it. It's there. A mirror copy goes to his, his business account. Same thing we do all the time, we mirror. I get my email on my iPhone, my iPad and my desktop and, and send it anywhere. So that, that's all that is. It's all the Commissioner One, Two, Three, Four, Five. Commissioner, Mr. Jaeger doesn't own Commissioner Five's email. Or Number Three Commissioner doesn't own Number Three's email. That belongs to Gulf County. That belongs to taxpayers. That, when it's sent to those email addresses, it goes to the county. It goes now. If you're sitting in audience and not thinking too much about it, you think that, um, the cloud has been here forever. We started off, everything we had, early day email was on PCs. And then as we got some money, we put them on servers. And now for the last few years, we've been able to put them in the cloud, good or bad. I missed, um, Commissioner Three was saying last week, he was saying last week that you could read the email and it'd be deleted. It was incorrect what she was saying. But we think we have made the best judgment call. We have done the best thing to do. We have moved forward. We are doing what should be done to guarantee that we don't lose emails. And, and let me say it again. Most of what Commissioner Three is saying today about email is incorrect. You want everybody to think the administration has her email. I do not have her email. There's no one in my office has her email password. Where the problem comes up, none of the other four commissioners are out there changing the passwords every time we turn around. But she is changing the password so we can't see her email. And, and last thing on passwords. I ain't said anything about it, anything about it here, here in the high up. Commissioner Three comes in my office. I'm in, I'm in Panama City. She directs Ms. Lanier to give her the password to the county's Verizon account, to your phone account. The only person in the county that's got the right, that had a name on that account was Lynn Lanier. You can't let everybody in the world and everybody's friends have a phone account. We don't need people turning on GPS, following each one of you around or me around or anybody else. But you can do all of that on the Verizon account. Commissioner Three's got a, she's got a password fetish that she is into changing passwords all the time, blocking the use or being able to see the password, blocking us getting password and going in and getting the Verizon phone password so she can see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, I got a comment to that, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to follow up on this Verizon account.
Just a minute and then we'll get to you. I'm not cutting you off. Go ahead, Commissioner.
On that GPS thing, I think is unless you turn it on on your phone. So they can't follow you unless you turn it on on your phone. Uh, but to defend Mr. Barfield, all right, that, which is the IT guy.
You don't need to defend Mr. Barfield. He's done a wonderful-
Wait a minute. Let, let Commissioner have it. He has the-
The, from my experience, the IT guy is basically the administrator of the system, of the email system. He has the authority to go in and change passwords. If you forget your password, he can go in and change your password. So we haven't had, I haven't went to Mr. Barfield and say, hey, I need my password changed because I, you know, I, I get all my emails. But unless you got a, a, a issue with your emails, Mr. Barfield's the only one, uh, from my experience as an IT, as an IT guy, can go in and change anybody's, can change anybody's password. That way, you, you probably won't get your emails on your phone until you take your phone to him and he has to put your, um, put your password back in, back in your phone. Then you receive all your emails. So Mr. Barfield is, uh, basically he's the admin of the system. So he can go in and change anybody's email password. Okay.
Do you know what your password is?
Now, uh, I, I don't, I don't need to know the password because I'm still getting everything to my phone. So there's no need.
So you only respond to emails from your phone?
Right. Or, or my iPad or-
Well, I'm older than you. I'm sorry, but I am. And it is not that easy for me at this age to type on a little phone. I do it, but it, it, it's not easy. You know, vision, dexterity. I would much rather type on a keyboard. I log into my email when I can on the webmail so that I could type responses on a keyboard. And we should be able to do that if we choose to. I've talked to many commissioners throughout the state and it's unheard of that they have to share their password with anyone. And, and I want to address this issue about the Verizon account. And that was, that was, uh, that was, what, so, okay, what's going on over here? Are, are you trying to cut me off? Okay. That was in response, and I'm glad you brought it up because it's nice to reminisce about the old times when I used to sit over there next to Commissioner McLemore. But that was when I was accused of, uh, certain phone calls coming in on my county phone that I was ignoring. And so, yes, I did get a copy of all the calls that came into my cell phone account so that we could determine whether people had called me or not. This is exactly the kind of thing that I'm talking about. It is a colossal waste of time, energy and county resources to play these games. But these are the games that this administration and this board has put me in a position to have to play for two and a half years. Now, you want to monitor my incoming emails, but you can't answer them. That, that's what I don't understand. You've got time to monitor them. Lynn Lanier has responded to people and sent emails, not even responses, but initiated emails out of my Commissioner Three email account when she's not even here on her cell phone. This is the old system. We were keeping emails on people's hard drives and those disappear. They're junked, they die. We all know that. Everything's gone. How many emails have we lost? That's not compliant. We have moved to the cloud. That's a recent move. Everything's in the cloud. It can be accessed by anyone. Every email that comes to me or that I send is saved. Nobody needs to have my password. This action, along with many other actions that this board and this administration take, are an effort to disenfranchise me and the people of District Three. And we are all sick of it. And it has to stop.
All right. That's it.
Can I say one more thing, please?
We fixed the move. I fixed the, I, 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 bear this, crap. Now come right here.
I'll make one comment.
Sure.
Just, just one comment and we can move on. I'm older than you. I'm older than most people that's sitting on this board. I don't have a problem with emails. You know why? Because I'm a hands-on person. I have my telephone. I don't need an email. I don't even have it. So take that for granted.
You're probably right to not have email.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I may take your-
I work out fine.
I may follow you.
I've been here a lot longer than you, a lot longer, and I've worked out fine.
You have and we all know that.
Just hold up right here.
The, the last thing I want to say about this is, is the fallacy is-
County policy is the bottom line and that's what we're going to follow.
The, the fallacy is if a public record request came in last Thursday, everybody's email except Commissioner Bryan's could be accessed.
That's not true.
IT did not have her password. It had been changed. The only person that had her password was her. So nobody could search those emails. The public can't search your emails. The public has to put out a public record request. They can't go to the computer and look at your email, Mr. McLemore.
Absolutely not.
They can go to Ms. Lanier or to the clerk's office and request it and look at anything they want to, to look at. But they can't log into some computer site and look in the cloud. That is not the way this system's set up.
And, and that is not true. That is not true. And I confirm that with our IT department. And I want to make something very clear here. I am not being critical of Mr. Barfield or our IT department. They do a great job and they are under a lot of pressure because they want us to function in, in the modern way. They're IT people. They all think way ahead of us. And this is nothing critical of them. They've done a great job with this whole transfer. But what Mr. Hammond said is not true. And I confirm that with Mr. Barfield, that my emails are accessible and people shouldn't have to go to Ms. Lanier to get the emails. They can go through and get them. And I don't have a problem.
Okay, they go.
How can they get? We don't even, the staff can't even get your emails.
Excuse me, Mr. Hammond, I will finish.
It's ridiculous.
I don't have a problem with Mr. Barfield having my, um, password. He doesn't use it. He doesn't go in and log in as me and send emails or read my emails and open them where I don't know that I haven't read them because they're already opened. I don't have a problem with Mr. Barfield having my password. The reason I changed it is because I didn't want him to be in the middle of this. Our employees are under a tremendous amount of pressure from the politics of this board. And I don't want anyone who does their job at this county to suffer for these politics.
Commissioner Brian, there's people out here that's got business for this board. I don't think, uh, like I said, I own my own computer. I pay my computer service myself. The county does not have one penny involved, the taxpayers and mine.
Mine neither.
Now, if, uh, let's say our good friend over here, Mr. Goff, sends me an email and says, could we have lunch this evening? That's nothing to do with county. Anything to do with county, it's right in there. I can go right in there, pull, put in my, uh, pull up my password or whatever you wanna call it, and I can read anything I want to. I don't have to go back to, go ahead, you go. Pull it up on my computer. One more and we're getting on. We've got people out here that's got important business.
One more. For those board members that have bad eyesight, we have issued one of these iPads to each Commissioner.
I have one.
And it's, it's a pretty good sized keyboard. You get a keyboard on the screen itself, or you can get one of these at Walmart like I did and put it in. But.
Cut the phone.
It's, it's a pretty good sized keyboard. Maybe within two and a half or three and a half classes, you might be able to see it.
Thank you. Alright, we're over here.
Oh, you're on me.
You're still.
Yes, I have one more minor thing. Um, as we head into budget time, I would like to request, regarding the jail budget, I would like to request an actual expenditures to date compared to the budgeted figures for this year's budget. Um, I know it'll take a little bit of time to put that together, but that's my final thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Just one brief thing. I want the board to allow, Jeremy, we've got, still got a few things with the beach driving ordinance that's confusing to the, uh, I think even the sheriff and to tax collector. So would you mind meeting with them? There, there's a couple of issues that I'll, and I'll discuss that with you, but there's a couple of issues that I think that probably we need to clear up. We may wind up having to do it by ordinance, uh, but it may be cleared up with, with just discussions. But if the board doesn't mind, Jeremy can do that for me.
Okay.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, sir. And the chair has nothing. This time, we're going, no, we're not going to the public. We got on the agenda Seashores Drive, Gulf Air access of Mr. Teddy Morales. Seashores Drive road expansion is Mr. Morales with us.
Mariolas.
Mariolas? Okay. Morales. Mariolas, okay, my correct, I stand corrected. Is the young man here today?
He's right here, but you must look at him. He's ninety-six years old.
Oh, we, we, I think we've.
He's World War II veteran.
Good.
He fought in the Pacific as a Marine.
That's great. My father fought there too. Along with a lot of people in this county. We have one up in Weahwaheska, Mr. Doyle, who's, I think he served in two branches, the Navy and I'm not sure, Mr. Paul, I could tell you the other one. Good morning, young man. How are you today?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name? This is just policy.
My name is Teddy Mariolas.
Mariolas.
And I live on six two-two Gulf Air Drive.
Alright, you have the floor, sir.
Sir, I have the floor, alright. Uh, you see how long it took me to get to the podium? And I was thinking, do you think how I could dodge an ATV or its four-wheeler that goes through my curve where I live? I live on the only curve on Gulf Air Drive. I observe, I can observe when I'm outside or cleaning my boat that I had, seeing how fast and things. Let me say that on two occasions, I consider myself very lucky that I wasn't getting my mail because vehicles that my neighbors saw destroyed two of my mailbox completely since I've lived there. And I consider myself very lucky that I wasn't there getting my mail. That they went so fast, they came on my lawn. Picture that. Well, put that aside. I am a elected board member of the Gulf Air Association. I've been there for fourteen years. Board members are charged, I repeat the word, charged to collect dues and protect the amenities of, it's not on, and protect, and maintain the property and protect and the safety of all property owners. It's written in Article Two. Article Two also says not only to protect and maintain the amenities and also the health and welfare of every property owner in Gulf Air. Gulf Air has a high concentration of retirees and children. With opening of this third access point, the odds of an accident will be significantly increased when off-road vehicles, et cetera, will begin flooding into our subdivision. Over the years, we've had people entering our subdivision, committing acts of vandalism, and this one is really, and destruction of our properties. I don't have to go into the details, you can imagine. And theft, I don't wanna mention all of them, at a, at a huge expense to our property owners. The last one was out of necessity, I repeat, out of necessity. We had a great expense to raise the fence around our pool from seven feet to ten. I won't go there anymore. The overwhelming majority of the Gulf Air residents are firmly against the opening of this new and unnecessary access point into our community. I want this board to know that if you approve this proposed access point today, you will undo fourteen years of tireless effort by many of us in Gulf Air that we tried to make it a safe community in which to reside. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Teddy, you need some assistance, say with you?
No, I, this is it.
Right. What, thank, okay. At this time, move into public discussion.
Excuse me. We got one back here.
He's not on the agenda. We're moving into public discussion.
Now is the time.
Now is the time. Yes, public discussion. Uh, Mr. Teddy was on the agenda. He called in, so that's the reason he. Wanna take, I got this one first. Mr. Carroll, you here? Philip Carroll.
Yes.
Sir, come up, please. I'll get you there. Good morning to you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
State your name for the record, please.
Philip Carroll, two oh four Gulf Air Drive.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. This issue here is not about golf carts and opening a path so a couple of people can go to the convenience store. It's more about one person's want versus the safety of all residents here in Gulf Air. If you open up and you vote yes here on this motion, you'll be sending an open invitation to vandals, trespassers, and they're mostly on ATVs, mind you, to invade our neighborhood. We've been fighting this for years as repairs and the bills mount and the frequency continues to rise. This is an unnecessary back way out of our subdivision as well because it's an escape route. It's an escape route for people who are coming to our neighborhood to do no good. And numbers don't lie. We have petitions today, which Virginia will be handing to you shortly. We have a hundred and twenty-four petition signatures with a no, firmly against this. Everyone we approached were happy to sign this. There was no one skirting this issue. It was a firm resolving no. Hundred and twenty-four petition signatures out of a hundred and seventy-eight households. That's seventy percent. Now, there's over twenty golf cart owners in Gulf Air. I don't see any of them here supporting this path. Everyone is fine the way it is now. This is totally unnecessary. And how can a hundred and twenty-four signatures that we came up with in a very short period of time and a lot of people out of town, we had to reach out to garner a hundred and twenty-four signatures? How can it override the wants of one or two people? It, it's just not feasible in my, in, in, in my opinion. We have a twenty-year history of fighting neighborhood vandalism. We just increased the pool fence to ten feet, as Teddy just mentioned, up from seven. The pool door has been ripped off of its hinges on several occasions. That's gonna happen. There are just bad people out there. But the access point that you're going to say no to today, hopefully, is only a hundred yards from our commons area. That is really too close for my comfort for them to get in, vandalize, as they have been doing for years, and then shoot right back out a very unnecessary path. Escape route, mind you. Jason Adams, who is building and adjoining subdivision in Beacon Hill, has worked with us at Gulf Air, and I'm on the board, he's worked with us, to extend his board, his fence.
Move to extend?
To move his border fence on Gulf Air ahead of his construction rate because they're having problems with the same ATVs, dirt bikes, et cetera, scooting through this path now that we've been trying to, to clog or to, to, you know, and they're scooting from that path rushing through our neighborhood because they know they're gonna get caught into Beacon Hill. And Jason Adams is actually putting the fence ahead of, ahead of his construction. And I know you're gonna hear from the fire department today, but as far as emergency access, my question, why is it such an important issue now? Why weren't they here in the first couple of meetings when this was coming up? It just seems a little too convenient. And the width of this path or access point, you really need it double, double lane, in and out for emergency vehicles. It, it, I don't think it's gonna be able physically wide enough to, to even happen. And if you're talking about getting to Gulf Air residents quicker, they've gotta come up the path, turn in a cul-de-sac, go five hundred yards, stop, make another curve to get back into Gulf Air. Currently, you're going down two-lane roads, hitting ninety-eight, and in three seconds you're in Gulf Air. It just doesn't make sense. This is totally unnecessary in so many levels. Commissioners, I'm imploring you today to vote down this totally unnecessary access point. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. It's creating a huge safety issue, basically inviting trespassers, mostly on ATVs, to come on in. This is not a pathway, but it's gonna be a floodgate. It's gonna be a floodgate into our community that we don't need. Don't let the request of one or two individuals outweigh a hundred and twenty-four people who've spoken out against this access point. Thank you for your time, Mr. Day. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, yes, sir.
Where are all these criminals? They live in San Joe Beach? They live in Beacon Hill? Can you identify where these terrible people that's committing this vandalism, where they live?
I can, I can not identify them by name, but I can identify, defy them by sight.
Sheriff, have you got a lot of arrests out there with people vandalism? And, uh, I mean, you stated this right here. We can go back and put it up.
Well, that's how vandalism is. You don't get to make an arrest.
I know, wait a minute, I'm talking to the sheriff here just a minute.
We've had reports, we've had, uh, um, ATV speed.
But I need to know where these criminals are all at.
Well, if I knew where they were.
Are they in Beacon Hill or are they in, uh, San Joe Beach?
Commissioner McDaniel, if I knew where they were, I'd send Sheriff Harrison to go get them now.
Is it, yes?
I don't have control over that. I don't have, we, we don't have control. It is happening. It's a twenty-year history. You can go back and.
Okay. Alright, that was.
Yes, sir.
Of your notes there and your comments and all. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Alright, at this time, we have, uh, let, let the gentleman get back to his seat. Mr. Duran? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, if you would, please. State your name for the record.
My name is Eldon Durand. My wife and I live at eighteen thirty. Trade Winds Drive. And, uh, we are, I'm up here to speak in behalf of my wife and myself in opposition to this pastor. Uh, it's unnecessary, it's unneeded, uh, it will cause problems. It's already been stated what the problems will be. As far as fire access, I don't think there's gonna be any improvement in fire access. Go down the road, go to ninety-eight, turn right, turn right again, you're in the subdivision. You might save thirty seconds. I don't know if anybody in the subdivisions had a fire that thirty seconds made any difference to. Uh, as to vandalism, vandalism is, is what it is. Vandals are people you don't catch. You can't catch them, otherwise they're crooks and criminals. So if you can catch a vandal, good luck. Most of the time, you gotta limit access so that they can't do their thing. Because they just, they go off. They just take off somewhere and you can't catch them. If, if the police were there when they were doing the act or you could catch them in the act, you might be able to prosecute them. But as it is, you add one more entrance to our subdivision, you're gonna add another, you're gonna make it easier for that to happen. It's already happening because that is not blocked. That should be blocked off. Because it was never in the original plan of the subdivision, or as far as I know, the county comprehensive plan or anything, to make that through, through street. Uh, so basically what I'm saying is, I urge you to vote against this as it's a bad idea. It opens everybody up to more liability and it causes problems. And what I would really like to suggest the county do is work with our subdivision and putting up a barricade to keep that closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright. Okay, anyone else in the public? Anything? Yes, ma'am, young lady, come up.
Nice to be called young.
There you go. I learned that from church ladies. I made the mistake of saying, what are, what are you old sisters doing? And they, they educated me right quick.
Be careful, be careful.
Young, always use the word young, you'll be safe.
Alright.
Uh, state your name, please.
Most of the time, you gotta limit access so that they can't do their thing because they just, they go off, they just take off somewhere and you can't catch them. If the police were there when they were doing the act or you could catch them in the act, you might be able to prosecute them. But as it is, you add one more entrance to our subdivision, you're gonna add another, you're gonna make it easier for that to happen. It's already happening because that is not blocked, that should be blocked off because it was never in the original plan of the subdivision or as far as I know, the county comprehensive plan or anything, to make that a through, through street. So basically, what I'm saying is, I urge you to vote against this as it's a bad idea, it opens everybody up to more liability, and it causes problems. And what I would really like to suggest the county do is work with our subdivision in putting up a barricade to keep that closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Okay, anyone else in the public? Anything? Yes, ma'am, young lady, come up.
Nice to be called Joan.
There you go. I learned that from church ladies, I made the mistake of saying, what are you old sisters doing, and they, they educated me right quick.
Be careful, be careful.
Young, always use the word young, you'll be safe.
All right.
Say your name, please.
My name is Mary Virginia DePew. I live at 219 Buccaneer Drive in Gulf Air. Sure.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Well, quickly, I will reiterate our opposition to Gulf County putting a second, another access into our neighborhood. We have collected over 120-some signatures representing no vote to John Grantland's request to open a path between Gulf Air and Seashores. I do think it is important to note that not one person approached and, but you know what? That's what I wrote down. I just happened to remember, I actually did find somebody. I guess it's not important who. Mr. Butler explained to me about the fire department, and so he refused. Well, he didn't really refuse, but he was gonna think about it.
Is Mr. Butler over here?
No, sir.
Not this one?
Did.
Okay, I didn't think so. Go ahead.
Anyhow, I'm sorry to get off that. I think it's important to note that no, nobody but one person didn't sign this. And I sent you all each an email earlier this week, expanding on safety issues. I hope you received that correspondence and will thoughtfully consider the people of Gulf Air that do not want this. And may I give you the petitions? We've got a bundle.
I received some last week.
These are more. What we've done, is it all right?
Sure, sure, come on.
Do I give one to you?
Yes, mine over to the clerk over here, or her representative.
The ones you got, that's, that's.
Anything else, Ms.?
That's all.
All right, thank you, have a good day.
All right.
Anyone else in the public, anything before the board? Yes, sir, come on up, young man.
John Grantland, 103 Periwinkle Drive. I originally brought this up to this board with this request a month ago. I understand the petition and the numbers. I've heard a lot of things here today that, in my opinion, is speculation. Floodgates, vandals, you know, flooding in, I don't think statistically that can be backed up. I heard someone mention that the HOA or the board members were charged with the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So is this county. So I will make that same request I made a month ago. There's a group of children back there, and that request that I made was an access path, and it was on a temporary basis until FDOT finishes their sidewalk project, which I think it's expected to let in 2016 right now. So I will make that same request I made a month ago and put this board to task to maintain the safety of my children, other children who live in Seashores or Saint Joe Beach, wherever it may be. This isn't about keeping people out or keeping people in, it's about keeping people safe. And that's what I like to ask the board to do. I understand the petition, and I respect that, but respect my children and others as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Grantland.
Thanks, John. Let me make a comment on this. When this first came to light, I was a child at one time, like all of you. We used to build three houses and played, and this is what this was originally come about, where children in Gulf Air play with children in Saint Joe Beach. I'm sure they attend the same school. It wasn't nothing about we're gonna put a big express lane through there, it was simply Mr. Grantland came before the board and asked, could you maybe cut a little old path where the kids could get back and forth to play with each other? And now this turned into a pure world war all over children. That's what it's all about, it's the children. We're not planning on, I don't know of anything before this board. What scares me is right behind you in Gulf Air and Seashore, Desiree Cattle and Timber Company, they liable to decide they wanna put 5,000 head of cows on you. And you think the vandal, the, the, I mean, can you tell them no? If, what is it? Let me look at this right here. Seashore, if more residents get built along on Seashore there, which is not part of Gulf Air, then they may want an access road, and they may be coming before this board and say, we don't wanna have to drive through Gulf Air. This is all got blown out of proportion. We're gonna get the, as Commissioner stated here, and we're gonna ask DOT or FD, to see if they can implement that area right in there, and that'll solve this. But I don't know, we've got any votes or anything coming up, a big issue for this highway.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I will say that on the petition, reviewing the petition, that there are folks from Seashores that have signed the petition as well that are against it, it's not just Gulf Air.
That's good, that's good.
And I don't think that the cattle will be running through the community if they do put cattle back.
They own thousands of acres right behind you. Anyone else? Gentlemen right over here.
Good morning. My name's Brett Butler. I live at 413 Gulf Air Drive, Gulf Air Subdivision. I have, my wife and I have four boys, and I don't understand the thing of all the criminals in Saint Joe Beach. I grew up in Saint Joe Beach, and there's some wonderful people there. My family lives there, my Uncle Don, my parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, we live in Gulf Air. My children like to go visit. I visit on a regular basis, my family. And the only way in and out of Gulf Air is Highway 98. I have a golf cart. If I want to ride, see my family, I'm riding down Highway 98 because there's no way to Saint Joe Beach. If my children get on their bicycles and want to go to Saint Joe Beach, there's no access for them because they, they put up posted signs saying, if you drive through this trail, you go to jail. So my children have to go down Highway 98 with log trucks beside them to see their, their family in Saint Joe Beach. So I'm, I'm asking as for the safety of the children in Gulf Air, to let's, let's cut this path so we can ride bicycles and, and golf carts and so forth. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sir, you've already been before the board, you had your chance. Come up, young lady, you're next.
Thank you for the young lady. My name is Kay Reed, 716 Gulf Air Drive. I have a son and three daughters, two of them are stepdaughters. They're grown now, one of them's serving our country in the military, she's a staff sergeant, been on a list to go to Afghanistan several times.
Just pull that mic over closer to you.
Okay, honey.
I have the most modern.
But what I wanna say is I, when I moved to Gulf Air and built a home there and contracted it myself, I knew all the rules. I had children. I take care of my children. I take them to their friends' house, houses, pick them up, and I believe that the government has too much influence on our kids, feeding them their summer meals. I mean, when we have kids, and when I had kids, I kinda said, well, I'm gonna need this much money, and I didn't expect our government to give them summer snacks, give them free breakfasts. You know, you have what you can afford. But I think everybody should take care of their own children. If they wanna go over there, and you moved to this place, and you knew how it was and how it's been for 37 years, that you ought to find a way. And I wouldn't want my daughters going through that path, a little path through the woods for a couple of hundred feet at night or trying to come back, I would not allow it. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Kay, good to see you, thank you.
Good to see you, too. I'm not gonna pass out up here.
Oh, all right, come on, station.
Melissa Farrell, 236 Balboa Street, Saint Joe Beach. Just a, a simple children's safe access passes, path is what we're asking for. No vandals, just safety for our kids.
Thank you, dear. Anyone else? I think the officer back here. Yeah, he got the side arm.
I can tell you right now, I am Tony Lee, I live at.
Hey, thank you, Tony.
I live at 211 Christians Curve, I'm not here in official capacity, and I went off duty, I didn't even know about the meeting, I was coming in the courthouse, and they said, you gotta go in there and talk. I'm like, well, I live there, you know, so I went off duty for this.
Sure, okay, we understand.
But anyway, I live at 211 Christians Curve, I'm actually closer than probably most of these people to that roadway we're talking about. To what I understand it, y'all, I think what's being discussed is maybe the pathway leading up to Ocean Ridge Lane, and then maybe going into Gulf Air from there. I know that is a designated road, 'cause I did my research on this back in the Bill Williams days of commissioners meeting, and it was actually a motion brought about before the board back then, and it was tabled, I think Mr. Butler's aware of that, to abandon that road. I had petitioned all signatures of all the current property owners at that time where they were going to abandon it. The only ones that were opposed to it was the Saint Joe Company, which was at the dead end of that property, which is now owned by Desiree. Have no, and, and my get-go, my argument from the get-go was just, and I know that's a 66-foot wide, and that is proper width for a road, a two-lane road to go through there. But if they put that road there, and I think even Commissioner Peters at the time had said, boy, that road's gonna be right at your bedroom wall because Gulf Air requires you to have so many feet back off of the front of the property. And, but my thing was, look, I don't care, you can make it a nature trail, you can do anything, we just want it abandoned, maybe go back to, I'd even give up my side of it just as long as a road wouldn't go there for cars and vehicular traffic. If you're putting a wide enough path for, I know the kids are gonna get in there, adults are gonna get in there, whether it's trespassing or not, they're gonna get in there. I've caught kids back there starting fires, you know, and I live right there, they're trying to break in my shed and stuff like that, and I can take care of it out of my own, you know, as a property owner and, you know, the citizen that I am. But to make a roadway, I'm against, and I don't know if there's a statute of limitations on that petition that was brought before the board several years back, I don't know how that works as far as this is, this stage, but, and they were, they just tabled it, they tabled that decision, and it never got brought about. So have no problem with a pathway, just not a roadway for cars. And, 'cause I just, that's my stance on it, and I appreciate your time.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And Mr. Chairman, I think that the concern is not children walking through a path. I, I think it's more of ATV traffic coming through because that's what has happened and has caused issues before, and it's not necessarily kids on ATVs. You know, it, it's adults as, as well, so it, it doesn't really matter the age of the person on the ATV, it's the ATV traffic coming through that it's loud, it's disruptive, it's going right next to homes, right behind homes, and I think that that is the biggest concern. I don't, I don't think anyone is concerned too much about folks walking through or walking their bikes through, you know, if it's sandy and you had, you had to walk your bike through. I think it's more about that motorized traffic.
Anyone else? Mr. Durant?
Yes.
If you have other business besides this, I will recognize you, but I gave you time, okay? I want that clear, understood. If you have another issue, come on. Anyone else? Anyone? Like a pastor trying to get you to join the church, anyone else? And no other business before the board this morning? Thank you for taking time out to come and come before the board, we will listen to you, we've heard what you have to say. So at this time, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Or, let me, let me.
All right.
Let's, let's clear this up, so it, we're done. It, honestly, I said two weeks ago, I'm inclined to make that a path, and I'm not inclined to make it a roadway. Tony, I, I think you're right on. I think the compromise here is to make a path until the bike path is, is put up. I'm not talking about a, a 20-foot wide path, I'm talking about a path that kids can ride their bicycles safely back and forth through that community. It's a, it's, it's county right of way. I don't necessarily, you know, I live right close to some woods, too, and, and occasionally you have four-wheelers, but that's against the law. And if they bother you enough, and the sheriff has already said he'll do everything that he can to make sure that there's, there's no four-wheelers riding where they're not supposed to be riding. So, you know, with that, I think the motion that was made last time by Commissioner Macklemore was just, just take the, take the piece of equipment through there that'll, that'll provide that pathway for our, for the children of those communities to get to the stores and those type of things, until, and that, that was part of the motion, until that bike path is built, and then we'll close it back off. I think that's reasonable. I, I don't, I don't see any, any, anything that's unreasonable about, about that, and I had seconded that motion, so if that motion, if you put in that motion before again, I will second the motion to stand this time.
Hey, my motion is to open it up, open it up only wide enough, four-wheelers, golf carts, no fire trucks or whatever. Open it up until we get the sidewalk finished out there or built on Highway 98, then it automatically, the date of completion, it automatically closes.
Sand walking path? Is that what you're talking about, a walking path?
I'm talking.
Yeah, I don't.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
Have to walk or ride, bring a bike.
Bicycle, golf cart.
You, yeah, you, yeah.
No fire truck, no fire trucks.
And no ATV.
No ATVs, they're, they're against the law.
Four-wheel drives.
Yeah, none of that.
I think it's reasonable, I'll second.
There's an officer right there, he has same arrest powers when it comes to ATVs.
And, yeah, and Mark, on, on getting this done, we have some, some of that milled asphalt, is that correct? Maybe that's what you ought to look at on making the path out of, and I would, I would detour any big timber as possible going through there, I wouldn't cut it, I'd leave it as natural as possible, that way we can always go back and redress it up. When the day comes that we, that we close it back off, that's my motion.
And as, as part of the discussion, I, I'm against putting milled asphalt out there. You, you will not close the path off if you put milled asphalt. Also, I, I have a very large district here, and I don't know if you're intending on, I have two work crews that have a tremendous amount on them to maintain the parks and the district, so I'm not certain exactly who would do this work, but I am against milled asphalt putting, being put out there. And also, as part of the discussion, I just wanna say that I did speak with the DOT, the path is on the same schedule it has been on, and Mr. Grantland is correct that they will be letting that in 2016. So we will be moving forward on the original scheduling, I know something was mentioned at the last meeting that it might have been pushed back, but it is not. So I, I am against milled asphalt being put out there.
One comment, Mr. Crawford, if you, I have two inmate work crews, if you need both of them, call them.
Thank you.
Can I use them, too?
I, I get a lot, I get a lot for them.
I'm just kidding. Well, Mark, I think you do need to stabilize it somewhat, uh, you may not be with me, but just stabilize it for Mike's meeting.
All right. Any further board discussion, Commissioner? Anyone from the public? All right. I'm gonna call a vote. All in favor of this temporary restricted area, all in favor?
I'm opposed because of the milled asphalt, so I'm opposed.
Chair votes. Temporary open, 4 to 1. Was there any other business before the board? I hear a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Thinking by Commissioner Quinn. Thank you, gentlemen.